Recording in progress.
Good afternoon, welcome to Worcester School Committee. Meeting, we're gonna first start off with. Roll call.
Member Alvarez.
Here.
Member Biancheria.
Here.
Member Benanda.
Here.
Member Guardiola.
Here.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Here.
Member Mailman.
Here.
Member McCullough.
Here.
Member Roy.
Here.
And Mayor Petty.
And we're gonna start off with the Pledge of Allegiance and then the National Anthem. The National Anthem tonight's gonna be sung by Rita Diaz from Dougherty High School.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you very much Rita, that was awesome. Got it. So we're gonna move on to. Student Advisory, and that is SA 4-7. To create a student wellness form mandatory for all schools to provide, to provide so any student in need of or in crisis is able to inform their teachers in discreet manner, allowing for teachers staff to help any student going through problems within the school or outside of school through a program which would allow for said students not to fall behind on their academics and continue their learning regardless of their circumstances.
Good evening, so the Student Advisory Board sent in this item as we were thinking of the mental health crisis going on in schools right now and how we're all working towards mental health through culture and climate and programs like that. And we, we aren't entirely sure of the details, but to have a Google form that students could fill out possibly through QR code in their classrooms if they're going through something and they don't feel comfortable directly going to their teachers or speaking person to person, they could fill out the Google form, it could be sent to their guidance and then they could get contacted from there so teachers understand if a student is just suddenly falling through with their grades or seem to be less involved, that's a way for them to understand what's happening. And, and it's better for teachers too because a lot of times teachers might assume that students have just, you know, it's that time of the year students have fallen off through motivation, but a lot of times actually because of crises going on, so yes.
Thank. Yep, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, thank you for this item, for clarity, do you want it at all schools K-12 or are you talking middle school and high school?
I honestly think all schools would definitely be beneficial because there are students in fifth and sixth grade who are going through things and who are mature enough to know how to go through that process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're sending that to Administration, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty.
And we have SA 4-8, to hold more community events providing a network between grade levels, teachers, parents and school staff which would allow for a stronger community in Worcester Public Schools and would create a positive mentorship between younger and older students who would serve as role models and lay the path for students to come.
So, thank you, so what we were thinking with some of these events would be a connection between whether it was middle school and high school, high school and elementary school students, I can speak from my school where we've had groups of students go to elementary schools like May Street Elementary and speak to the children about vocational schools and what it's like, and so we could have that all around where high schools have events held for middle school and elementary school students if they're interested in going there eventually, or just to create a link through and just a stronger community, younger students speaking from experience enjoy getting to know older students and what it's gonna be like in like three to five years and this would allow for a stronger community in Worcester.
Thank you, so we're sending that to Administration, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty.
Okay, so we have, so Mary Jane is the executive official for student reps for Worcester School Committee, we have two new members present today in the meeting, so one's online and one is here in person, so I'm just gonna ask that you stand up, state your name, what school, and then we'll go to the student that's online.
Hello, my name is Skylene Solano and I come from University Park Campus School, I'm currently a junior.
Thank you, and Casey, can you help us out online?
Uh, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, that's, there's me, um, hi, my name is Armea Guardes Fanyan and I am the representative for Burncoe High School and I'm a junior.
Thank you and welcome. Thank you, so we will move on to the consent agendas, any questions? Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty.
So we'll move on to public comment, any member of the public may address the committee regarding any item before us for two minutes. Please state your name and city residence please.
Thank you, Fred Nathan Worcester, great idea, student advisory on, on every single school calendar, there should always be a student advisory and we cannot go without student advisory ever, if we ever go without student, student advisory, we would become like Venezuela, so we don't want that. School choice, it's plain and simple, school is, your school is your choice and there should never be anything stopping anybody even if it means less people go into Worcester Public School, it is what it is, people should have the right always, that's why you call it school choice. Next item, 4-105, the Robert Pozella way, awesome, he's done a lot for the schools and this should be a no-brainer and if anyone dares to vote no, I would wanna know why they vote no.
Thank you, this is state your name and city.
Hi, David Webb, City of Worcester. Dennis Pozella was it, the, I didn't know him, but multiple different communities have reported that he was problematic in his decision-making, discriminative was a word that was thrown around, he has been harmful to many communities, I don't know the easiest way to say this, but let's just say he was friendlier to white students from what a lot of people have said, I will leave the rest to people who are hopefully waiting online to speak, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else in the chamber, no, Casey, anyone online? Uh, hold on, we got one more person, state your name and city of residence.
Hi, my name is Heather, I reside in Worcester, I was in the middle of writing this out so I don't have everything that I wanted to say exactly down, so I'm probably gonna stumble over things here, so I would like to speak in regards to a 4-105. On the night that I publicly broke my silence about the sexual abuse that I survived in the Worcester Public Schools, the first administrator that we encountered was Rob Pozella upon coming into the building, did he ask why we were there, ask if he could help or if we needed anything, he did not, he pointed to the flyer that we had with us which read in part, erase rape culture from WPS, and he said, we don't want that, that here, my very pregnant sister-in-law at the time responded, rape, neither do we, he didn't think that was funny, his response was that he didn't want us there, when confronted by an adult survivor, my mom and citizen activist supporters with a myriad of signs discussing people's own experiences of assault and harassment within the schools from racism-free WPS, his response was to shut us down, shut us up and throw us out, that is not who I want in any way associated with the Worcester Public Schools, that is not a person who I think reflects who we are as a city or who we are as a school district, thank you.
Thank you. We have anyone online? So we'll start with Roberto Diaz, state your name and city of residence and what item you're speaking on? Roberto, unmute yourself.
There you go.
Yep, we can hear you now.
Uh, apologies, thank you so much, my name is Roberto Diaz, I'm the director of Worcester Interfaith, I'm also a resident of our city, proud graduate of Worcester Public Schools and through the chair I want to say that the names we choose for our streets and public spaces hold deep symbolic power particularly for our young people, so it is critical that our public honors reflect the full spectrum and contributions made to our community, often role models and figures with whom all students can identify with such as, you know, Ms. Betty Price, Sarai Rivera, Dr. McMullin, who, you know, who was my principal at Dougherty and the very first woman of color that I was able to see and experience in a leadership position, this is a time for us to reflect, I think, on the values we want to elevate through our public symbols, while the intent is a good one clearly, right, the impact still matters, continuing to name streets and buildings after powerful white men sends a particular message to our students and our community, especially our students of color, that their contributions and histories are less valued at the time, at a time when all of us are striving to foster like more inclusive environment, we gotta be mindful of this, so through the chair I would like to ask this committee to pause this petition while we come up with a community-driven approach to naming public spaces, we need a review committee with broad representation ensuring that we're celebrating a wider range of contributions particularly in underrepresented groups such as women of, people, women of color and other underrepresented groups, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Cardithia, please unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, good afternoon everyone, hello to the chair, my name is Cardithia Moore Jenkins, I am a long-term Worcester resident and I am a mother, I am a graduate of Worcester Public Schools, I am a mother of a Worcester Public Schools graduate as well, having worked in this community for over, over thirty years, I deeply respect the work and dedication of Rob Pozella during his tenure with our schools, however, as we consider the lasting impact of this street naming, it's essential that we reflect on how we can ensure that our honors and recognitions truly reflect, reflect the wonderful diversity of our students and community, in order to ensure equity, fairness and transparency, I believe it's important that decisions of this nature, especially when they involve individuals with close ties to the committee, be guided by community input and a focus on equitable representation, instead of moving forward with this decision immediately, I'd recommend we create a community-driven process for naming streets or buildings where we actively seek to elevate the voices and contributions of people from diverse backgrounds, particularly people of color, women and other underrepresented groups, thank you so much.
Thank you. One more. So it's Jesse's, is it Jesse's iPhone? Jesse, can you unmute?
Hey, how you doing?
We can hear.
This is Jesse Dante McKiver, I am a Worcester Public School student or parent, I'm sorry, a little nervous right now, and I'm also an educator outside of the district, but I live in Worcester, I'd like to express my concerns about the decision to name a street after, uh, somebody that doesn't represent, I feel like, the people of over majority in this community, I believe in the decision overlooks an important issue of representation and also undermines like due process of like folks in the community choosing somebody who they want to represent, uh, the community by naming the street after the person. While the intent of this decision may not be to exclude the impact of such decisions and matters, as educator myself, I wanna say that continuing to name the streets and buildings after powerful like white men sends a message to students especially, those from the global majority that their contributions and histories are less valued, I can name countless people in the city of Worcester that I've met since I've been here that definitely deserve this, uh, honor such as this one, at a time when we're all striving to foster an inclusive environment, we must be mindful of the messages these decisions convey, though the intent may not be to exclude, continuing to honor primarily white men sends a message that reinforces old patterns of power, I encourage us to pause and consider a more inclusive part process for naming spaces, one that celebrates the contributions of all, and I'm putting there.
Off set, is that it? That's all, okay, so we, we'll move on to the report of the superintendent, from here, Anywhere Together, Student Academic Achievement Part Two, Superintendent Moneris.
So, good evening, actually afternoon, we're still in the afternoon, as our trio of doctors come to the front, this is the second part of a data presentation on how our children are doing in the district, last school committee meeting, we shared with you how we did on MCAS, which is really a measurement of the end of the year, last school year, in the education field we often, it's summative in nature and in education we, we, we refer to it as the after the fact because there's nothing we can do with that data, it cannot make a diff, we cannot change the outcome of that data, today, we're gonna be looking at the achievement of how our children have done this school year, the students that we have in front of us in our classrooms this school year and how they are performing at our baseline as we enter our, the start of the year, so the next slide takes us to, just a reminder for the school committee, for our viewing audience, we have unanimously approved strategic plan that was approved last December, it is our guide for the work that we're doing in Worcester Public Schools, there are six priority areas, it was a plan that was collaboratively developed with community input, with staff input, with student input, tonight we're gonna hear specifically about our work around equitable, equitable resources and educational programming and, and so the next slide we'll talk further about that as it links to the superintendent goals, so we have two goals that are directly linked to tonight's ROS, first one is the student learning goal, which will embed conversation around implementing the culturally responsive policies and practices, the work that we have started this school year, you'll hear a little bit about that at the end of the presentation and how we intend on using this goal to help further accelerate achievement in the district, the next slide reminds the committee of the second of the fourth, four goals that I'm being evaluated on this school year, which is the professional goal and it's around working with staff to ensure that we have a more reflective culture around data, not a culture that uses data as a punitive means, but instead a way for data to guide our instruction and to practice continuous improvement, and I'll just say yesterday we met with a very dynamic group of staff members representing EAW and listening to them and our collective agreement that what makes a district, a, a district of high excellence, high results is the collective efficacy of how the staff works together, so we're already moving in this direction in Worcester Public Schools and this, tonight you'll hear how we're doing so far and then where, what we will be doing to move forward, with that I turn it over to Dr. Morse. Good afternoon and thank you for having us here this evening, oh, this afternoon, sorry, and to my right, I have with me my colleagues Dr. Marco Andre and Dr. Andrew Lampy, they'll be leading the bulk and majority of this presentation this afternoon, the objectives we hope that you walk away with today, this afternoon are that you learn a little bit more about the different types of assessments we use in the Worcester Public Schools, we use many, the, we will talk about the different types of assessments and how they are used, you will also receive more information about where we're starting the school year, what are our beginning of year or BOI data points and what that means for us, and then we will end the presentation with some alignment discussion around what the data means for the teaching and learning division in our focus areas, so with that I turn it over to Dr. Andre.
Good evening, so we're gonna start with providing some background information on the different types of assessments that we administer in Worcester. There's four particular types of assessments that we'd like to highlight, the first is formative assessments, these are informal assessments that teachers do on a frequent basis, these are quick checks for understanding to see if students have learned a concept or skill that was just taught, these are assessments for learning, for helping teachers to identify what they may need to do instructional in a more on-time basis, next we have universal screeners, which are typically administered three times per year at benchmark windows, these assessments are relatively quick checks on a student's skill level, these are most often used as part of the MTSS, multi-tiered system of support process to identify skill gaps and monitor student progress related to interventions or supports they may receive, Dr. Lampy will recover the results from our DIBELS and STARV screeners that were administered at the beginning of the year. Interim assessments occur on a more frequent basis and are kind of like a hybrid between formative and summative assessments in terms of how the results are used, these assessments are typically used to check on student understanding and achievement of grade level standards that have been taught, they're an assessment of what a student has learned in generally a four to six week period of time, but can also be used to reteach and or embed supports for incoming, for upcoming lessons for any knowledge gaps that may be identified, and finally, the summative assessments, these are less frequent assessments of what students have learned typically once a year, these are assessments of learning, the example we are most familiar with is the MCAS exams, these types of assessments do not typically get used to inform instructional practice in the moment and are used to evaluate what students have learned over a long period of time. Students are constantly learning and growing academically and what they are expected to learn at their grade level also changes over the course of the year, skills should be constantly developing and are not fixed in time, so we use a variety of tools to assess students and check on their learning, on this slide, there are some examples of the types of formative checks for understanding and more formal ways we gather information on student progress, again, this information is used to inform instruction and identify student supports. In Worcester Public Schools, students are assessed using data from universal screening assessments such as DIBELS, STAR reading and STAR math, to best assess student literacy development and to meet early literacy screening regulations, we use the DIBELS screener which measures seven early literacy skills, students receive an overall composite score based on these seven early literacy skills and we talk about these as being at, above benchmark, at benchmark, below benchmark or well below benchmark, for STAR, which is developed by Renaissance Incorporated, they had done a linking study between STAR data and MCAS data which led to the STAR state benchmark levels, these are predictive of MCAS performance, the STAR state benchmark performance levels are similarly labeled to the MCAS performance levels, so those are exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations and not meeting expectations. These are the screening windows or benchmark windows for STAR and DIBELS, you see BOI, MOI, EOI, which just reflects beginning of year, middle of year and end of year, these are the months that the assessments are administered in Worcester. So how do assessments inform instruction? If the results of the screener indicate that a student is at or above benchmark or meeting or exceeding benchmark levels, they continue receiving tier one instruction without the need for additional interventions, that's the column on the right-hand side, these students would continue to be screened over time to make sure they remain at grade level, for students who have results that are below the benchmark level, this indicates a need for additional tier two and sometimes tier three supports and interventions, the students are still receiving core tier one instruction, but should also be receiving additional supports and interventions, as the student receives these supports, they are screened more frequently as a way to monitor their progress toward addressing the skill gap, if interventions and supports are successful, students should grow and get closer to being at grade level. All students need to learn the core content at their grade level, this is accomplished through tier one instruction of grade level standards using high-quality instructional materials and with guidance from our instructional framework, curriculum maps and common assessments, these are things that'll also be touched on later by Dr. Morse, but when students have skill gaps, this can be a barrier for them in accessing the core content that is being taught, in those situations, when students are not on grade level, our multi-tiered system of supports, our MTSS comes into play, MTSS is a continuum of high-quality instruction and intervention, the first essential phase of the MTSS is collecting and analyzing data from universal screeners, this data is used to identify any skill gaps and the targeted supports that will help students accelerate their learning outcomes and be ready to fully engage in tier one instruction. At this time I'll be turning this over to Dr. Andrew Lampy who will cover the results from our beginning of year assessments.
Thank you, before we jump into looking at the data, I'll note that in the slides that follow, we will be comparing this year's performance at the beginning of year to performance at previous beginnings of year, for STAR reading and math, we have data going back to 2022, but because we reintroduced DIBELS last year, we only have data comparing last year and this year at the beginning of year, one advantage for this though is that we are able to compare the performance of students who have never received the new CKLA curriculum, which are the SY24 results, to the performance of students who have received one year of CKLA, which are this year's results. To begin with DIBELS, we just highlight the fact that nearly every student in grades K through three completed the DIBELS assessment at the beginning of the school year, a 98% completion rate representing nearly 7,400 students means that at most, fewer than 150 were not assessed by DIBELS within the first month of the school year. For the DIBELS data, we will present the percentage of students who were at or above benchmark and below the figures or next to them will be callouts that provide additional context, and note that at or above benchmark indicates that a student has demonstrated foundational early literacy skills that are appropriate for their grade level, and as you can see in this figure, the percentage of students at or above benchmark decreased slightly for kindergarten in grade one, but increased notably in grades two and three. relative to last year. We will also be presenting the results from Hispanic and Latino students, English language learners, and students with disabilities. Here, we're looking at the percentage of Hispanic and non-Hispanic students who were at or above benchmark at the beginning of last year and the beginning of this year. You can see that the percentage of students increased for both groups relative to the prior year, and that Hispanic students improved slightly more than non-Hispanic students, closing the gap between the two by one percentage point. Here, for EL students in grades kindergarten through three, there is again improvement relative to last school year. The percentage of students at or above benchmark increased by at least two percentage points for both EL and non-EL students, but the difference between the two increased by one percentage point. Now, for students with disabilities, we see a similar story. Both students with and without disabilities increased relative to last school year, but the percentage of students without disabilities increased by two percentage points more than the percentage of students with disabilities, widening the difference between the two Sticking with DIBELS, we next show you four figures that have been provided by Amplify, who is the vendor that supplies the DIBELS assessment. And they provided us with the rates of students who were at or above benchmark last school year and this school year, both in WPS and across the country, allowing us to compare our own data to national averages, which include data from tens of thousands of students. First, looking at kindergarten, we see that our three percentage point decrease relative to last school year is not an anomaly. Currently, there is no empirical research we are aware of that can help shed light on this national decrease in the kindergarten cohort. For first-grade performance, WPS did not mirror the nation, as we decreased by two percentage points while the nation increased by one. But interesting to note and something that we are looking into is the fact that 64% of students who entered kindergarten in the at-benchmark category started grade one below or well below benchmark. For second graders, we also do not follow the national pattern, but here, it's because we improved substantially relative to the national average. What this indicates is that our students, who have received one year of CKLA instruction, have improved in their early literacy skills to an extent that's greater than the change, or in this case, lack thereof, across the country. And finally, to close out DIBELS, for our current third graders, we see a similar story to that of our second graders. While the national average increased by one percentage point relative to last year, we increased by nine percentage points, shrinking the difference between us and the country to fewer than 10 percentage points. And again, these results reflect the performance of students who received one year of CKLA when they were second graders. Now, we turn to looking at the results of our STAR reading assessment, which measure reading comprehension as opposed to early literacy skills. And remember that STAR reading is also administered to students in grades two through nine. And for nearly all of the results from STAR, we show you, they will be broken down as the percentage of students who met or exceeded the state benchmark on the assessment, split by students in grades two through six on the left and those in grades seven through nine on the right. And here, we see that across all student groups, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding the state benchmark has increased relative to the beginning of year for previous school years. In grades two through six, we have continued a three-year pattern of improvement. And in grades seven through nine, we experienced the largest increase of the last four years, and the percentage of students meeting or exceeding the state benchmark is the highest it has ever been since the pandemic, since grades, or excuse me, for grades seven through Now, turning to Hispanic and Latino students, we see that the percentage of those students in grades two through six who met or exceeded the state benchmark is the same as it was at the beginning of last school year, while the percentage of non-Hispanic students has increased by one point, meaning that the gap between the two has widened. While in grades seven through nine, both Hispanic and non-Hispanic students have continued to increase since the beginning of the 2023 school year, but the change for non-Hispanic students is greater than that of Hispanic students, meaning the gap between the two has also widened. We see here that for English language learners, their performance has remained relatively stable over the past three beginnings of year, while for non-EL students, their performance has increased by at least two percentage points from one year to the next. This indicates that the difference between the two has been steadily increasing for the past few beginnings of year, and this is true across grades two through nine. Here, we see that the percentage of students with and without disabilities who met or exceeded the state benchmark has increased year over year at the beginning of the past few years. In grades two through six, the increase relative to last year was the same for both groups, meaning that the difference between the two has remained stable. In grades seven through nine, while both groups improved relative to last beginning of year, the difference between the two increased by three percentage points. And finally, for STAR reading, we show you the performance for all students in grades three, five, and eight specifically. And what we see here is a similar story to that we've already covered. For all three grades, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding the state benchmark is between two to five percentage points higher than it was at the beginning of the previous school year. So to briefly summarize the results from our early literacy and reading comprehension assessments, we see that for all grades but kindergarten and grade one, there has been an increase relative to the beginning of last year. Hispanic and Latino students in grades seven through nine increased relative to prior beginnings of year, but not in grades two through six. EL students have not changed in terms of their percentage of students meeting or exceeding the state benchmark in the past few beginnings of year. And students with disabilities have increased year over year to the highest level since the 2023 school year, while students without disabilities have either matched or surpassed that rate of change. And now, we transition to showing you the results of our math beginning-of-year assessment. And these will come from our STAR math results, and here, we'll be showing you the results for students in grades one through nine. What we see here is that in grades one through six, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding the state benchmark remains at the highest point it has been for beginnings of year since the 2022 school year, while in grades seven through nine, this year, the percentage of students was three points higher than it was last year and is also three percentage points higher than it has ever been since SY22. Jumping right into student groups, we see that similarly to with STAR reading, the percentage of Hispanic and Latino students meeting or exceeding the state benchmark has not changed since last year for students in grades two through six, but neither did the percentage of non-Hispanic students, meaning that the difference between the two has remained the same. Whereas for students in grades seven through nine, both Hispanic and non-Hispanic students improved markedly relative to the beginning of last year, but Hispanic students improved by one percentage point more than non-Hispanic students, meaning that the difference between the two groups shrunk slightly. For EL students, there was very little change relative to the beginning of last year for either EL or non-EL students in grades two through six. A one percentage point increase for non-EL students means that the difference between the two increased slightly. In grades seven through nine, both EL and non-EL students increased, but the difference between the two also widened. But note that overall, rates of EL students meeting or exceeding the state benchmark is higher than that for reading, especially for elementary students. Now, for students with disabilities, we see a similar story to that of the previous slide. There's very little change in students in grades two through six compared to the beginning of last year, and the difference between the two groups increased slightly. While for students in grades seven through nine, both students with and without disabilities again improved, but the difference between the two again increased. And finally, for STAR math, we show you the percentage of students in grades three, five, and eight who are meeting or exceeding the state benchmark at BOI since 2022. While the percentage of third graders dropped by one point relative to last year, both grades five and eight demonstrated increases of at least five percentage points relative to prior years. So to summarize our math results, we see that overall, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding the state benchmark at BOI is the highest it has been since the 2022 school year, but growth has been slow in grades two through six, and the differences between student subgroups and their peer groups have changed little since last year's beginning-of-year measurement. In grades seven through nine, though, there is substantial growth for student subgroups and their peers, though the differences between those groups has increased relative to last beginning of year.
So I will begin to wrap this up, and I'll begin with just a summary of our baseline information. So Worcester Public Schools uses a variety of different tools, screeners, in order to constantly monitor and track student progress. And Worcester Public Schools also has a foundational, robust, and strong instructional framework in which we use to ground what sound instruction looks like across the district at every level. We have varied and robust MTSS systems that provide that just-in-time instruction, tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three for both academic and social-emotional needs. And the good news is our reading data is starting to show a bump, and we're excited about that. So we're beginning the school year with some promising information, and the fact that we're showing gains has been a testament to the hard work that's happening in the classrooms across our city. And we continue to focus on our Hispanic, our EL students, and students with disabilities as they are a highlight and a major focus in our strategic plan, but also in the superintendent's goals. And we'll continue to work tirelessly to ensure that all subgroups are achieving and narrowing that gap. And important to end it with a really positive comment, our beginning-of-year math performance is the highest it's been since the year 2022, which is something we find very exciting. So to the next slide. You saw this at our last presentation, and in it, you see the tree in the middle, and we set down some seeds, and we're beginning to grow some roots, and you see the tree is starting to bloom. We believe that if we start to the left, we look at our future-ready orientation. Our future-ready orientation is the vision that drives us to ensure that we are creating the just-right conditions so that our students can optimize their future by having the just, an incredible opportunity in the Worcester Public Schools to have the high-quality education that we know that they deserve. We will continue to focus on data literacy. As you saw, we look at a lot of different data points. We recognize our last presentation was on MCAS, which is just one slice, and it measures whether students are meeting grade-level expectations and standards. However, many of the other assessments you saw are used on a daily basis or an interim basis to check in and constantly monitor for improvements and then make adjustments as we go. Our staff work very hard to ensure that they know where our students are and create the next steps for instruction so that we're able to give them the instruction that they need. We believe we provide top-notch professional development. We have a very talented team at the district, and we have very talented focused instructional coaches that deliver just-in-time targeted PD to our teachers in the schools. But we have a very talented team across the board that have a lot of expertise and bring that expertise to the district in a very powerful way. Culturally responsive pedagogy is a major initiative for all of us this school year and many to come. We want to ensure that we are ensuring that culturally responsive practices are being learned and on a regular, being provided to our students during day-to-day instruction. You probably hear a lot about this when you hear from DESI, you hear about what programming we should be providing to students, but they call it HQIM, high-quality instructional materials, is a tool and a resource for our teachers. We want to make sure that our teachers have all the tools and resources they need to do the job that is in front of them, which is instructing our students and giving them what they need. You heard a lot about today, MTSS, or what that means is that we have multiple-tiered systems of support and instruction for kids. So students will, everybody universally is provided tier-one instruction, but as students' data is assessed, teachers pivot and create opportunities for additional learning, which is tier-two, and then tier-three is even more intensive than tier-two. So that is a system that is evolving and driving instruction on a day-to-day basis in our schools. You looked at some of our subgroup data, and we really want to make sure that we're effectively meeting the needs of our diverse multilingual student body. And as such, we have committed dedicated efforts around making sure our educators have the tools they need, the information they need, but also learn the right practices that will make a difference for our students. And most importantly, we want to ensure that all students have access to very high-quality education and access to grade-level expectations and standards. So in sum, these are the many different ways that teaching and learning, this circle will support the growth of that tree, build roots for the years to come, and recognize that growth sometimes takes a little bit of time. And just like the tree, it doesn't bloom all the time, but when it does, it's a wonderful thing. So our next slide is really, I just wanted to pull out a couple of these things that I wanted to make sure that these are educational jargon-y concepts, and I want to make sure all of you have a full understanding of what they are. So data literacy, it's collective efficacy. So it's the entire team of, at the school systematically reviews different data points. And collective efficacy is one of the levers that has been documented in research that is one of the highest-level impact measures that we have found. So once you have a team that works collectively together to ensure that we are moving student performance in the right direction, we believe that through data literacy, these teams assembled will be an important next step and a continued step for our district. And we also want to help our staff better understand the data. As you saw, there's a lot of data. To be a teacher today, you have to be well-versed in what the data means, and you heard a lot about formative assessment, summative assessment, you heard about screeners, and you heard a little bit about different ways teachers use assessments in the classrooms. So as our staff are using different data tools, they also have tools that they use on their own in their classrooms. So how do we ensure that we know where students are and what they need? So this is an undertaking in the district that we are providing a lot of support to schools, because this is not just a school thing, this is a district thing. I did talk a little bit about MTSS, and I just want to ensure that we make, we don't lose sight of the fact that MTSS is, universally, everyone is provided tier-one instruction, that's a grade level, and then as the data determines, we look at different interventions and scaffolds or supports that may be needed for students to access tier-one. But once different instructional strategies have been applied and students might need more of something, we provide it in a different kind of way. Our educators are really good at that, and they have a variety of different methods in which they use to provide their students with what they need. However, MTSS is not just academic, it's also social-emotional. Students learn best when they feel safe in a classroom of trust, so we have done a lot of work on sense of belonging, and we don't want to lose sight of that, that learning in a classroom that is socially, emotionally sound is an integral part of tier-one instruction also. And access to grade-level standards and expectations, we have high expectations for all learners. Learning is rigorous, it is challenging. Expectations with students today, as you know, are very high, so in order for our students to be ready for what that future holds, we want to ensure that we are providing that just-right instruction, we're meeting expectations and delivering the instruction that our students need. So intentional and multilingual, and students with disabilities also have high-level, very rigorous expectations, and they require some different moves and some different scaffolds, but they are also very entitled to high-quality, grade-level expectations and standards. So Worcester Public Schools promises to work very tirelessly to be dedicated to ensuring that we look at data on a regular basis, we provide just-right instruction as needed, and we continue to push the bar and continue to provide a high-quality, rigorous education. So I will then turn this over to Dr. Menares.
Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. Thank you, team, for your presentation to the committee. And committee, I want to emphasize a few points. One, the goals that the committee has set for my evaluation, where we're looking to reduce the gap between how the total district is doing and how our Latino youth, our language learners, and our special, children with special needs are doing, it's clear that those are the correct goals, because the data is showing that, that there is that, those, that separation. As the district grows, we need to improve outcomes for the Latino youth, which again makes up nearly 50% of our district, and then our children who need the most because they're learning, they're learning in English with, and learning English at the same time. So we need to make sure that we're tracking how they're doing, as well as our children who are identified with special needs. It's our responsibility. So those are, I still believe, the right goals for the committee. And when I come back for the mid-year review, we'll bring some percentages and talk about the growth and the achievement that we want to see for this school year for the whole district and for those specific student groups, again with a focus on third, fifth, and eighth grade as identified in the strategic plan. So that's one piece I want to put out there and let you think about that.
So that's one piece I want to put out there and let you think about that. I do believe that the goals that were set are the right goals. The second piece, and then I will turn it back to you, Vice Chair Johnson, is there is still a lot of work to be done in Worcester Public Schools, it's very evident. I'm happy to see that we are seeing growth and some nice significantly, statistically significant jumps in our data sets from the beginning of this school year compared to last school year. So, Dr. Andrade, significance, significantly significant percentage is about a 1% increase, correct?
Yes, with the size of the population that we're assessing.
So 1%, thank you. Now, for those of us who don't live in the statistical world, 1% doesn't sound like a lot. But when you think, when you know statistics and you understand the size of the district that we serve, a 1% increase is a really good increase. When we have things like 4, 5, 6% increase between the start of last year and this school year, that's wonderful, because that shows that our children are achieving at higher levels. I'm pleased to see that. However, I am not satisfied, because when I look at 30% as a district, or even 33% as the, as a district, there's another 60% that are not, right? And that is also part of the work. So although the possibilities are starting to shine, and we're happy about that, never want to paint the picture that we are good as a district, because someone told me just recently, good is the enemy of great, and we need to be great. So we're not good enough yet, because we're not great, but we will keep working in that direction. With that, I turn it back to you, Vice Chair Johnson.
Thank you. Thank you all for that presentation. Anyone? Member Mailman? Can we go to Member Benanda?
Just a, just a couple. Page seven lists, probably a pretty decent list of all the assessments that happen in our district. Are any of these new? Through the chair to Dr. Moss, probably.
I could, I'll go ahead and add. Dr. Andrade, I could answer that. I, I think I'll add, and you add anything, okay? So the only, none are new for this particular school year. DIBELS, we brought back from last, so DIBELS, we started last school year, that is specific about the children's ability to read and the skills and dispositions related to that. Everything else, I believe, has been in practice in the district.
Correct.
And then my other question, you know, when we looked at all the MCAS data last week, we looked at our, you know, across gateways, across the state, et cetera. Are those comparisons available for these tests? Do most districts test DIBELS and STAR?
Through the chair. Through the chair, yeah. Not most, but with, with DIBELS, for example, we know that there are tens of thousands of students within those grade levels that we were looking at.
Yeah.
We, the data we have are Amplify's, because they are able to provide that to us, we meet with them, and they, it's just part of the, part of the service they provide. But we are not typically able to see how other folks might do when they administer these types of assessments. Typically, it's a district's internal information, it's not something that necessarily gets publicized. So it's not really a chance to compare to others.
And is it, is it a test, a bucket of tests that DESI says we should be doing, or this is kind of?
It's, it's a standard practice for identifying students who might need additional supports to do this. It's a, it's just a solid practice that should be happening. With the DIBELS, though, it's a little bit different in the sense that the state, about a year or so ago, had the new law that was put into place, and so the early literacy regulations require that a certain type of assessment was administered.
Okay.
It just so happens that, you know, it goes along with CKLA, and so we're able to use the DIBELS. So I would suspect there are a number of districts in Massachusetts using DIBELS, because everybody has to use something K-3.
Okay, great.
But I couldn't tell you off, I couldn't tell you exactly how many.
Okay. I imagine we'd get there someday, but whatever, we'll see. Thank you.
Sir? Member Benanda?
I thank you for this report. Dr. Andre, isn't one of the reasons that we do use DIBELS too is that it is a screener for dyslexia? So we use that for kindergarten, right, and then also a second time?
Yes, the state's identified this as one of a very limited number of assessments that can be used, not necessarily to diagnose dyslexia, but to provide an opportunity to indicate that a student might need further diagnostic assessment or evaluation to determine if they have dyslexia.
Thank you. So one of the things about DIBELS versus STAR is that DIBELS is administered very differently than STAR is. So a teacher sits down, right, with the students and assesses them, you know, beginning of year, middle, and end of year. The STAR is an assessment the students take independently. And again, you can compare it, there is a closer correlation, sometimes that's questioning, but it appears that the latest information say that the STARS are closer. Gives a closer indication of what the MCAS scores may be, is that still true?
Through the chair, yes.
Through, through the chair. Yes, the MCAT, the STAR assessment actually was, from the Lincoln Study, which allows the STAR results, when we're looking at the state benchmarks that we presented today, to be predictive of how students might perform at, at the time that they take the MCAS later in the year.
Thank you. And I was wondering, why did you decide to compare to the country instead of the state on those slides?
Through the chair.
Through the chair. Do you mean DIBELS, or, you mean DIBELS?
Yes.
Because we have the information, we don't have it at the state level. The Amplify, that company that has, the vendor that has the product, as part of the work that we do, they're able to compile their numbers nationally. And with our success representative, we were able to look at the national numbers and then put ours in comparison to it. So it's just, it just happens to be part of the nature of the service or work that we have with Amplify.
Thank you. So my concern at looking at all this is, you know, the same groups that we really try to improve, your Latino, Hispanic, your Ls and your special ed. So, you know, if you put all the facts that you put here together, 26% of Latino Hispanics were at, at or above benchmark in reading, but that still means 74% are not. And the same thing with Ls, 78% are not where they belong. And then students with disabilities are 22%. That, although there has been a 1% or 2% increase in that, I'm thinking we need more than a 1% or 2% to continue, or we're still that far behind for those groups, we're really where they should be. I was very concerned about the STAR data for Latinos only in grades two to six, only 18% met, we, 82% didn't. And then also seven to nine on the STAR data, 22% met, and 78% did not. So my, my question is on, you know, okay, this is the data, and you have a lot of it, and so now the next question is, is part, is there a part three of this presentation that will talk about the plan? Like what, what is the plan for Latino Hispanics, for Ls, for student with disabilities, because those seem to be the three areas that we're still trying to improve? And in the reading program, I, I know that you spoke, Dr. Moss, about you have great coaches, which you do. My question is, though, is there any other additional professional development that we can give all teachers so that they continue to understand that reading program we give them is not going to give the result totally that we need? It's really the skills of the teacher and how they're able to implement it.
Through the chair, when we adopted CKLA, there was a lot of professional development that was provided to teachers. And we continue to have PD, professional development for a variety of different people in the district. We call it literacy leaders, and we continue to provide guidance around the science of reading and structured literacy.
Great, thank you. And then my, my last question is regarding special education. I did receive a few phone calls from parents this week, and it's about middle school and how the LD teacher is now the reading teacher, so I don't know if this is true, so perhaps you can enlighten me on this, that LD teachers in the middle school are used as reading teachers now, and they have regular and special education students in the same class. And the question that the parent asked me, and I don't know the answer, is in that situation, how a special education in grid C that says they're supposed to have the Wilson reading actually happening?
So through the chair, I would need more information about that, that is not our model. So could you please let me know what school it is, and I'll address it?
Perfect. I guess I'll have to tell you that privately. I'm just concerned that where we have such low special ed scores, that LD teachers who specialize in certainly the teaching of reading, and if those students are not getting what they need, it's only going to add to the scores that you're seeing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All set? So motion to file? Approved, I'm sorry, approved and filed. Roll call.
Member Alvarez? Yes. Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes.
So we'll move on to approval of grants and other finance items? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, thank you. Yep, approval of grants and other finance items? Roll call.
Member Alvarez? Yes. Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes.
General Business to receive a report with depth, with in-depth BIPOC and hiring and rehiring data. This is yours, motion to file? You good with the backup we received?
Sorry, I'll slow down there for a second. The only, yes, I like seeing the year-to-year-to-year-to-year, I think that gives us more data. The only, the only thing I'm wondering is per category, is there, you know, how many people are of our 5,000 employees or some such number? Like roughly, can you speak to that, Dr. Ku?
Just so I'm clear, what's the actual question that you're asking? I didn't hear it myself.
The actual, the actual question?
So when she answers, I know what, I know what the, I don't know what the question was.
Let's find, let's find out. The actual question is how many people are in each category?
Okay.
Roughly, if she knows.
Okay.
So through the chair, I can get you the information, that was all the new hires, and we did break it down by categories, but we can add the actual numbers to it.
Yeah, or at least the percentages of the total, I think it's, helps us understand the groups.
No, I understand the question, and I will make sure you have that.
Thank you.
So we're filing this and we could get that in a Friday thing? Is that okay?
Through the chair, I know, I think that this is like a public report, so I'd like it to be publicly given back to us.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we, we just get that at the next meeting, just an update on that? Thank you. So motion to file? Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes.
GB4-100 to get an update on the versus trans might stop app and its functionality. Member McCullough?
As it reads.
So we're sending this to FOG? Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes.
GB4-101 to begin discussions around the potential impact of the inflation rate for next year's budget. Member McCullough?
As it reads.
Refer to FOG? Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Question? Through the chair, would this item, I guess I'm not understanding, so Dr. Allen gave us this information, it was 1.2 or 1.3 or some, some terrible number that none of us are happy with. When can, but how do we have discussion prior to budget? Through the chair.
Mr. Allen?
It seems, I'm not sure why it's going to FOG, that's my question.
Through the chair, so the preliminary number will be known at the end of this month. The state will use the adjusted number for the quarter in December, which will be used to influence FY '26 budget. So we'll have a good sense of the inflation factor in October to start planning for FY ' '26.
Okay. Perhaps through the chair, if I can ask the, is the intent to have a different conversation? I guess I don't understand this item, through the chair.
Member McCullough?
The intent would be that we know that the inflation, inflation factor, flushing sounds the right with that, though, had the impact on our budget for this year. So simply if there are things that need to be discussed as far as finance, operations, governance, that they are, and then they're brought back to the full committee, if not, it's just part of the budget planning process.
Thank you.
All set? So we're sending this to FOG? Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
No.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes.
GB4-102 to review the school choice policy around out-of-school, out-of-district student eligibility into Chapter 74 programs. Member McCullough?
Thank you. And this is essentially, as it reads on my end, it came up in conversation recently when we were talking about students and their ability to apply to Chapter 74 programs, even if they're out of district, and kind of wanting to get a better handle around that.
Member Mailman?
And also to, you know, we've had this discussion many times about, it's not just about our Chapter 74 programs, it's about Goddard, it's about all the other programs we have. And, and maybe if, so I'd like to add all the other special programs or whatever, I know we have a name for some of these programs, but all other, what's lottery-based, I think that we should be looking at the same thing, and maybe potentially, if Member McCullough is okay with this, that we actually kind of have a decision made around school choice and understand maybe the law related to it. I, I guess we can choose to be in it or out of it, through the chair? To the superintendent?
Madam Superintendent, or Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, yes. These are can opt-in to receiving school choice students, and that decision is usually made in the spring. I think the school committee holds that vote usually in April for the fall, the upcoming school year.
Okay, so we, we, I don't remember any conversation around it, but it's actually a, we will make that vote. Okay, great. Thank you.
So we, we will send this to FOG with the amendment, if you don't mind?
Yes, that's fine.
Member McCullough, with the amendment that we look at all programs, which include Goddard, the Hanover Academy, those such things, okay? Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes.
GB4-103 requests a report from the administration on what, if any, training has occurred for the Worcester Public Schools administrators regarding labor slash management roles, boundaries, and contractual obligations. Member Guardiola?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. As we strive to create an enriching educational environment, it's vital that we uphold our duty to both our teachers and students by providing effective training for our administrators. Well-prepared administrators play a crucial role in supporting our educators and enhancing student outcomes. Investing in comprehensive training programs will equip our administrators with necessary skills and knowledge to navigate their responsibilities, foster positive... skills and knowledge to navigate their responsibilities, foster positive, uh, positive relationships and hold the values of our educational community. This commitment to professional development ensures that our teachers feel supported and empowered, ultimately benefiting our students. You know, let us prioritize the development of our leadership team by strengthening the entire edu- educational ecosystem. By doing so, we can create a more effective and collaborative environment that positively impacts both our teachers and students. Specifically, I'd like to know what training sessions have been conducted in this area, what topics have been covered during these sessions, how many administrators participated and at what levels, how often these trainings are provided, and are their plans for additional trainings or updates to the current policy. This information will help ensure that our administrators are adequately, uh, adequately equipped to navigate their roles effectively within the context of our labor relations.
Thank you. So we're sending this to, um, administration, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman? Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
GB four dash one zero four requests administration to provide a list of names and a total number of bargaining units within the Worcester Public Schools and the number of current existing labor contracts. Member Guardiola?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm requesting a list of the names and the total number of bargaining units within the Worcester Public Schools. Additionally, I'd like to know the number of current existing labor contracts in place. This information is important for our understanding of the landscape of the labor relations within our district. As we begin the process of preparing for next year's budget, it's essential to acknowledge our duty to the taxpayers of Worcester. Our community entrusts us with their resources and it is our responsibility to ensure that every dollar is spent wisely and effectively. Uh, you know, in our budget, uh, discussions, we must prioritize transparency, accountability and the alignment of our spending with the needs of our students and schools. By carefully reviewing our current expenditures and considering the feedback from our stakeholders, we can create a budget that reflects our commitment to the educational excellence while also being physically responsible. I encourage us all on this committee and the administration to keep our taxpayers' interests at the forefront of our decision-making process. Together, we can ensure that we not only meet the needs of our students, but also honor the trust, uh, the trust placed in us by our community. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're sending that to administration, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman? Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
So GB four dash one zero five to request the roadway at North High School be named in honor of Robert F. Brazella, a former student, co-founder of the North High School Alumni Association, and a steadfast activist to many successful local initiatives and programs throughout his years that have contributed to our city's civic and public school success. Member Biancaria?
Thank you. Just want to cover briefly, uh, some of his accomplishments and what I've done with, with this when this first came up as a topic. Um, I have over 70 signatures because I've attended neighborhood meetings in our community, um, not only, um, in reference to North High School, but also on the east side. Um, we look at, uh, just some of Mr. Brazella's accomplishments. And we're looking at, um, Central Mass Safety Council, guest speaker, substance abuse coordinator, um, AIDS Project, Worcester started the first initiative with the HIV drug addictive supportive group in Worcester House of Correction. House Manager of Faith House, substance abuse coordinator for Anna Maria College. He's received a number of awards. He's also, um, the first, uh, person that was, um, on the list as a founder for the, um, Reyes House for Men. He's created many staff and regional professional development drug education safety programs, including bullying, um, which were held at North High School and Worcester Tech High. He has organized, um, youth opportunities, youth projects throughout our east side. He's also, uh, born and raised on the east side and continues to live on the east side. So I look forward to having this discussion, um, in FOG. And I certainly will have this information, including additional signatures, um, from our community in reference of support of this and, um, certainly anticipate, um, a full discussion on this. Thank you.
Member Mailman?
Thank you. Um, I, I recognize that our naming policy has, you know, faced a lot of scrutiny and that, um, Member McCullough is, um, working and the FOG committee is working on creating a new naming policy. I, um, you know, I was going to make a motion to file this because I think that we are so, um, behind on some of these things, but I guess that we need to have the, so I'm confused if this is going to FOG or is this going to administration?
This is going to administration.
So I don't, I, I mean, even it going to administration to me, um, what will happen in administration with this item?
So, um, unlike the other process, um, actually it would go to administration. Administration would then bring this to the school, the principal and the school community and the site, site council at the school to have discussion and dialogue on actually what, does this make sense? Get feedback from the school, from the community up in that area, and then bring it back to administration with some feedback and a potential recommendation, which would then come back to the full committee, but we would then send it to FOG because we, we then need to do more, um, leave, give it time for public comment, for people to come in and weigh in on it. There's some, also there's some budget or financial implications if it were to pass as well.
So that is?
On, on our end. And then after that is done, depending on, it will then come back to full committee.
So I just, um, you know, we can get 70 signatures and we can have some people that just learned about this on the agenda, um, speak tonight and call in. And I'm pretty concerned with this item. So I don't, and, and I guess is, if we're still working on our process that we, is not necessarily in writing yet, or I guess our old one was, um, I wonder if there's, I, I, you know, we, we're talking about superintendents, we talked about Dr. Boone, we've talked about Betty Price, we've talked about people of color and making sure that we're inclusive in our naming. We, we named two, uh, two gyms or two that didn't, we didn't follow the process either. I really, I, and I do feel that there was a method of operating with climate and safety that is different than it is now. And I just, it seems, it flies a little bit in the face of what I think we're about now with our climate and versus what we were doing then. And, um, so I have a lot of concern about this item and I have a lot of concern that, you know, for members that are non-FOG, we're not going to hear about this until months and months from now. And so I, I, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's going to be a process. I, I mean, I can't tell you when this will come back to administration anyway. So I, I mean, I think it's going to be a process. We are working in FOG, those that are in the committee in FOG, we're working on updating the, um, policy on, uh, how our naming and things, um, go, so.
Yeah. I mean, there was no opportunity, I think if, when site council goes, I mean, I think that the FOG committee had a lot of concern about community input. I think that, I recall that that was a very big deal about community input. And, um, so it, the step before it comes to you doesn't really include community, it just really includes the site council or the school, which the site council.
So what I said was the school community, the community at large in general over it. I, I mean, it really represents and it really has something to do with the school, right? So we need to get that in front of the principle with that administration, with those students and, and figure that out along with the community at large. And then, once they determine what, what they want to do, they would then have further conversation with administration.
I might make, I, I think I'll make a motion that, um, when we are finalizing our document for FOG, that we actually think about having a wider community conversation about naming. I mean, it's a hot item in the city with roads and things like that. And, um, you know, I don't know if it's going to become that way here, but, um, it hasn't been in the past really, although it, so there's a, there's a lot of places to go and I'm concerned about it. I just want to make sure that we're covering all the bases before we, um, publish something or handle anything.
And I would agree with you in regards to our policy. I think it being in FOG and us working on our policy, I think we should be able to get a lot of community input. I mean, cause there's been a lot of things that have come up lately, um, in regards to different namings and things. So my guess is that has generated some public interest in that and that we should get a lot of feedback from the community or as we're starting to enhance and work on our naming policy.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we will send this to administration, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Thank you. And motion to adjourn? Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Thank you. Good night.